Okay, let's continue on. During the break, I had an opportunity to check on the bus ticket to Albuquerque. And if we get you on the bus on Sunday night, we can get you out there by Wednesday.
I'll throw in a pillow.
I got you covered. Okay, item 2.04, Teaching and Learning and School Leadership Development. Sam?
Members of the board, 2.04, Teaching and Learning and School Leadership Development will consist of information and update related to school improvement, as well as the SIG cohort proposals and an update in that regard. That said, I will turn it over to Dr. Williford, Mr. Coleman, Dr. Charbonne, Pat Malisi, and Ms. Holliday.
Yeah, did I miss?
I think they wanted to policy for you.
Okay.
Student Support Services.
J F C A?
Yes. Okay. My apologies. So, we asked Mr. Cloud to go back and do a little bit more work on that policy for us, and if he had an opportunity to read it, I think he really, really clarified the criteria around which students might be removed from classes by a teacher for minor disruptive behavior. So, any more clarity you'd like to provide on that, Mr. Cloud, we receive that now?
No, I changed the wording of a few things and made it clear that this policy with its rather involved procedure only applies in circumstances where it's reasonable to expect that a teacher can send a note home twice before removing a person.
Okay. I think Brad was a patron of that.
She was.
Of that thing, so. You're good? Okay. Okay. And this will be on the consent for the 19th. Okay? Thank you very much. All right?
Good afternoon. Chairman Houston, Dr. Robinson, School Board, and Dr. King. We are going to discuss today a quick Indistar update, and that will be followed by a school improvement update for our SIG schools. As you can see on our PowerPoint, the Indistar plan is an individualized school accountability plan. As you all know, it is web-based. It is accessed through that website, and also you need a password, and everybody has a password. Okay, thank you. Indistar is very comprehensive. This shows the strands, A through K, and TAO1, TAO2, TAO3, all the indicators, and that the schools have to follow on their Indistar plan. This one, the most comprehensive one, is the Transformation Model, where all 96 indicators are included. But the plan is extremely thorough, and it is updated weekly by schools. The way the process works, it starts with the end in mind. It's a backward design. It's a backward design on purpose. If, there's a section in Indistar called Wise Ways, and if you click on Wise Ways, you will see numerous research-based strategies and practices. Schools are directed to read Wise Ways. From those research-based best practices, they create a vision. What will it look like when this is fully implemented? And then they go on to describe what it looks like now, and the steps that they will take, the research-based strategies that they will implement to reach that vision. Plans are monitored continuously, as I said, and the plans are based on student data. All Indistar plans formed at the school level start with student data. They are continuous works in progress. They are based on the cycle for results. If you look at TAO1, TAO2, and TAO3, those are the cycle for results. So, it's all in sync. And each school has a school process manager that keeps Indistar updated, and then we, as executive directors or coaches, and we monitor the plans. What we do is look for evidence of the school's work on the plan through all of those things listed. You can find on Indistar meeting minutes, agendas, indicators, tasks, and student performance When we are in Indistar as coaches, we can leave what they call coaching comments. And those coaching comments can be supportive. They can be suggestions. They can be references to research. They can be nudges, if nudges are needed. But they are very specific in relation to an indicator. As a coach, we can put the indicator number that we're referencing, or an area of team planning. Coaching comments are required, by the way, for Title I schools and I schools. And every school's responsibility, every school has Indistar responsibilities, however, they differ. They are differentiated depending on the school's status. And as you can see up there, accredited schools in Norfolk need you work from TAO, indicators TAO1, 2, and 3. Schools that are accredited with warning do those plus other indicators relevant to their school data. Our focus schools are aligned with district indicators that are in the district Indistar plan, and our priority schools are addressing all 96 indicators. Now, they don't do all 96 in one year. They do 32 a year. So, that's a quick overview of Indistar, and we have our resident expert here, so any questions you have, we'll be happy to answer. Dr. Gabriel?
Is this provided to us by the state? I couldn't remember if there was a cost associated with Indistar.
No, it's provided by the State Department.
And then the person at the building level, that's the process manager, is that usually an assistant principal, or an assigned person, or is that a specialized position?
Actually, it's an assigned person from the principal, and usually it's the assistant principal, or a key member of the leadership team.
So, I log in every now and then and try to follow some of the things that are in there. How do you all extract outcomes? How does Indistar help you, or help someone see outcomes? I mean, I see a lot of output stuff, you know? Do these tasks, check off the task, have five meetings, we had five meetings. But does this tool help in any way to try to get a sense of progress towards the outcomes that have been placed in the action plans?
Actually, yes. When you look at the indicators, you have the TAO1, and pretty much the TAO1, 2, and 3. They are required for all schools regardless of the category of status through the VDOE. And in looking at TAO1, they ask that you have a system in place for identifying students in need of tiered support, and that's documented through the task in TAO1. In TAO2, the intervention strategies that schools are implementing based on the data in TAO1 should be documented in those tasks. And TAO3 is primarily the monitoring aspect, which, like Dr. Malisi said, the full cycle for results. And quarterly, the VDOE require our Title I schools and priority schools and I schools, which will be coming up soon, to quarterly post-data, specifically supporting interventions provided in reading and math. And then they also have a file cabinet where they can upload data to support the documentation noted in their indicators.
And along with the filing cabinet, we do find a lot of information in the meeting minutes.
And I would add, in order to follow the results, one critical component of the Indistar process is the involvement of the coaches, the principal, and the team in being able to monitor the implementation of the plans. So, that gets into the queries, the discussions that we have based upon the tasks that are developed. And if the right question is asked, and the right tasks are developed and implemented, then that's the process that moves it forward. We have to keep in mind that Indistar itself is, it's a guide to school improvement. So, when you look at the Wise Ways and the research-based strategies, those are guides for what our schools should be able to do within the improvement process. I would like to add that it also correlates, it correlates to the strategic plan in a lot of ways. If you look at the Transformation Model and the different strands, you'll see recurring themes that you also see in our strategic plan. So, when our principals and their leadership teams develop the task to meet the criteria of the Wise Ways, then you'll see that those tasks, you might see also in our action plans. For example, when you look at TAO1 and 2 and 3, which deals with tiered interventions and the implementations of those tiers, and quite frankly, one of the questions that we as coaches, and even our state contractors have to ask is, are the interventions working? So, you create these tasks, and then you look and see if they're working. So, that correlates to what we often ask within our cycle of results of, you know, how do we know that they're working? So, we have to track those tasks, and that's, I hope that I've answered your question in terms of making sure that the Indistar program is working.
So, let me ask a question another way. If the, if a board member were to log into Indistar, what would you recommend we do? What do you recommend that we look at in order to, if anything? What would you recommend that we look at that just gives us a snapshot of progress? Because, you know, I'm trying to follow in all the TAOs and all of that, but, you know, I can look at some things, and it will say, by June 2014, we'll identify all of the, I don't know, targets for the district, and it'll say 20% complete. You can look at something else and say, at the district level, the curriculum is aligned, it'll say 100% complete. But what are some things that, since you all gave us the password, if we log in, what is it that you recommend that, you know, that we give attention to, if anything?
I would say you look, right now, you look at the TAO1, 2, and 3, since that's what all schools have been charged to develop tasks within the, within those strands. And so, if you take a look at the TAO1, 2, and 3, and then also look at the fact that those strands are tasked or redeveloped each year, so you should be able to see that and see the schools, the schools' movement towards 100% completion. And I would say, look at that in terms of the tiered interventions and the results that we also report to you. So, you can't really look at it in isolation. In one aspect, that shows you the process, and then, of course, we look at student achievement for the results. That's our CFAs, our DBAs, and as we're going through the year. So, it should be a nice correlation between percentage complete as far as those tasks that are developed, and the results that we're getting.
I would also recommend you look at the meeting minutes, because on a monthly basis, right, the meeting minutes should be specific as to what data, the data that the schools are looking at, on the discussions that are occurring, if the strategies were effective, and what are some of the next steps. So, that should have a trail of the monthly meetings, so you can just really see what the discussions are focused on at their team meetings. Meeting minutes, yes.
If you look from school to school in terms of whether they're a priority focus or a I school, and you're looking under, you know, the create for those tasks, you know, while all schools have to do AEO1, 2, and 3, those that are warned, you know, will have some additional tasks, and you should see, or plans, and you should see that they are tied directly to their warned area, or those areas that they have, you know, to have focus on. So, you should see some differentiation, you know, when you look from school to school as well.
One other, just one other question. In terms of the burden of time that's placed on the schools, or whoever at the school is entering this data, is that something that is working well? You hear complaints about, I mean, it just seems like there's so much stuff that's being placed on staff, is that just working well, or?
Instead of taking minutes on paper, they do it on the computer, and they have someone assigned at a meeting to do that. So, it's part of the process, and no, I have not heard any kind of restraint complaints.
And the different members of the leadership team are assigned to the different indicators and tasks, and usually when the team members come together for the leadership team meeting, they'll bring documentation to support whatever the focus indicator or task is for that particular meeting, and they discuss documentation.
And as you see up there, Cohort 4, the first year in improvement, even though those schools have to do all 96 indicators, the Department of Education provides numerous days of technical support during which we and those principals go up there and work on Indistar. So, we're working on those indicators at that time.
Additionally, if you go to Lake Taylor Middle, their plan will be quite extensive because they've been in for four years. So, they have all 96 indicators logged in, recorded, and there's some information about all of those indicators. If you go to Ruffner, they've come out of school improvement, so you're going to see a lot of close-out information, because they are actually closing out all of those indicators. They are no longer in priority status. So, those are just some things as you go through the plans that you need to take note of.
Who is the difference between the executive directors coming into school coaching in this area, and the walkthroughs that they do? Is there?
It's all coaching, you know, in different forms. So, you know, coaching, when it's in regard to the plan or Indistar, it may draw in pieces that are observed, you know, from walkthroughs, but it's not exclusive to that. So, you know, if, for example, we're at a school improvement team meeting, when they're actually going through this process, the coaching might apply there, and we might not even talk at a particular meeting about walkthroughs at the time, because you may be focused on a different set of data. So, you know, the coaching, you know, can take on different meanings with different, you know, kinds of topics or data that you might be looking at.
Also, the walkthrough, the focus walks are snapshots in time. They are simply what we see at that time, whereas looking at this, we can see the entire process from year to year, from month to month, and so it's a different view that we get, different lens that we're seeing.
Yeah, I'd like to say, Dr. King, you go ahead. I was just going to say that when we go into those meetings, we're like the third eye. We come in and we look at their indicators. Because they're in it, it's like anything else, they're in it, they're doing it, it's their plan. Sometimes they miss things. Maybe we're looking at their professional development plan, and we see some things that they don't see in terms of what they need to add, or how they need to focus within those indicators. We also look at things like school climate and culture, and we also bring in the district perspective, which is something that they often don't look at or include when they're doing their plan. So, we do attend their leadership meetings, and we contribute as they're sitting down and working on those indicators.
In addition, as you have heard, the Indistar process allows schools to keep a running record, to have information on how the school is moving forward with implementation and improvement, et cetera. So, that information is there, inclusive of the things that you just heard, the statistical data to support it, action steps that are being taken. The expectation around a focus walk or a walkthrough is so that we have an additional accountability piece at the central level also, but also at school level. So, when a focus walk or a walkthrough is facilitated by an executive director, then it allows us to take a look at what we see in Indistar. For example, if you see data, that data's going to tell you some story about how things are going, and then you're going to also see evidence of what's happening in the school. The walkthrough then serves as evidence that those things are actually happening. So, it's another safety net for us of sorts. Now, that's not just a district-level function, because we want schools, individual schools and teams, to become poised and incremental ways to get better and better with doing walkthroughs to check for the same, because principals are going to want to know that the things that are there, that they're happening on an ongoing basis. So, that walkthrough also gives additional data for the executive directors to support what is in Indistar as well, so.
We're going to move to the school improvement grant update. The first, the first thing we do when we are engaged in writing the grants for school improvement is to do some planning, and the schools have to formulate goals. And these goals are based upon the student achievement. Now, you just saw the names of the priority schools. We have seven priority schools. And priority schools represent 5% of Virginia's Title I schools, the lowest-performing 5% in the state. Right now, we have 36 identified priority schools. Norfolk has seven. So, that gives you a framework for the priority schools and the focus. Within those schools, we are looking at the student achievement based upon the Virginia Standards of Learning in the warned areas. You know, of the 30 warned schools, all of them are warned in math. With the priority schools, all of them are warned in both English and math. Some are warned in all four areas, some in just the three areas, but all of them are warned in English and math. All of them did not meet the AMO targets. Now, that is the annual measured objectives, and those relate to our gap groups. In other words, how did our SPED students perform? How did our ELL, our English language learners, perform? All of the schools did not meet the AMOs, save one, Tidewater Park, and that school met the AMO by reducing the failure rate by 10%. So, our schools have developed goals in those areas. The second goal all of the schools are working on is professional development. That is critical, because all of these priority schools have from 25 to 50% of their teachers that are new. And you know, when you have new teachers with less than three years on the faculty, and many of them less than three years at the grade level, we have to provide targeted, specific professional development to those teachers in order to see academic progress and achievement, especially within our Tier 2 and Tier 3 students. We have concentrated on professional development and instructional planning, that is the lesson planning process, instructional delivery, depth of knowledge, student engagement, and increasing academic rigor in our classrooms. So, these are the goals that the schools are working on, in addition to recruiting and retaining the highly qualified teachers they need, and improving instruction through the use of technology. And the grant addresses those specific areas. Those are areas that are also related to our strategic plan and our seven priorities. One of the sections of the grant deals specifically with the areas needing improvement, and the principals and their leadership teams have to collect evidence and write about student achievement, the decline, and what are the improvements going to be, the areas needing improvement in the warned areas, and what improvements they're going to include, and how they're going to get there. Most of these grants, in fact, every grant requires additional personnel to meet the goals that they listed. All of them indicate a need for tutors who come in and work with our students, teacher stipends for extended time, working with students, and also engaging in professional development activities. And the state looks at providing more personnel in the early stages of the grant. So, these Cohort 4 schools that have just entered, they will allow some additional personnel in terms of coaches and teachers that will help to jumpstart the school improvement efforts that they are proposing, in addition to the tutors and all of the others that are required to get the school moving in the right direction. But as they move forward through the grant process, then they're looking at, how do we sustain these efforts? And they may not allow the same amount of personnel, because they want the school to be able to move on and sustain the effort once the grant monies are no longer there. These schools also require additional resources. So, through the grant, they're allowed to purchase hardware and software, especially these first-year grants are requiring smart boards, they're asking for laptops, iPads, some of the supplemental instructional programs related to technology or iStation. One of our schools involved with the science piece, we have a need, they're warned in science, so they're requiring the e-science Achieve 3000 program and the Capturing Kids' Hearts, because part of this grant also looks at climate and culture in the building. Our lead turnaround partners are a very important piece. All of these schools have a lead turnaround partner. In Norfolk Public Schools, we have two lead turnaround partners that were selected by the school principals. Some schools have selected AIRA, American Institute for Research, and other schools are utilizing Pearson. However, all of these lead turnaround partners are assisting our schools in increasing capacity among teachers, looking at approaches to teaching and learning, research-based, different approaches that will help them get a quick win with regard to student achievement, improved stakeholder engagement. So, these grants also look at how to increase stakeholder engagement and parental involvement in the schools. Improve climate and culture, and lowering our suspension rates, all of these goals have been included. And then the participation at our monthly shared governance team meetings. We're actually having those this week, and our lead turnaround partners work very closely with the school principals. Most of these plans include coaching for the principal, and helping the principal and the faculties understand. the faculties understand what it takes to turn a school around, and that's different from just running a school from day to day. It requires a different approach in the turnaround model. So any questions on the grant piece?
Lake Taylor Middle, yeah, Lake Taylor Middle School's in its fourth year.
Yes.
Lindenwood and Tidewater Park are in their third year. Tell me just a little bit, I've got a couple of my, tell me a little bit about the DOE's involvement in working with the turnaround.
The DOE, they are intimately involved with us. We have a contractor that works with each school, a VDOE-assigned person. They work with the schools, they're at all of the meetings. They also visit the schools throughout the month and work with that principal and leadership team. They provide support when we need things done, like working with getting some workshops for our schools, or getting some state content specialists, someone to come in and help our schools with professional development. They also assist us in providing that. Anything else you want to chime in on?
It should be noted that the VDOE has, I guess, hired more contractors to work with us, because we do have seven priority schools, but we have three contractors to work with the different schools. And I've seen, we are having SGT meetings this week, and so I feel fortunate enough to have my SGT on Monday. And we've seen, and I had one last month as well, but they had a nice transition from the previous contractor to the person I'm working with now, that's working with our schools, and lending our principal support, which kind of really supports us. It supports the process of the EndeStar and the coaching, and then having another helping hand with the priority schools, because as Dr. Malicia alluded to and Dr. Charbonne, this is a, it's a major process for any principal to turn a school around. So the more support that a principal has, then the better off, or the faster we intend to accelerate the turnaround. I can't speak to how it was in the past, but from what I've seen this year, and even the midstream change is needed and welcomed, and they've been very supportive in that.
Dr. Vaughn Holloman, she's second-in-command in the Office of School Improvement, and she's been assigned to Norfolk. And she was at the SGT meeting today, in fact, at Lake Taylor Middle School.
In addition, they also monitor and conduct periodic desk audits of the EndeStar plans of the schools, because depending on the different categories of the schools, and they have different requirements. And also, before they approve the grant application, like Cohort Four, we were waiting now for feedback, and then we'll do a final submission, they look and ensure that the identified needs at the school level are aligned and being addressed in the grant application, as well as aligned with their EndeStar-planted indicators and tasks. So they monitor all aspects of the whole improvement process, as well as conduct monthly or every other month, technical assistance sessions, because in two weeks, we'll all be with Cohorts One, Two, and Three, enriching for a full-day training.
How will we know it's working?
We know it's working when we see improved student achievement. And even though, you know, Lake Taylor is still involved in the process, we did have Ruffner to come out of the school improvement process, and we have seen, and I know we've been doing these updates on CFA and DBA data, but we have seen improvement in their data this year.
You also can tell it's working by the process. When you watch the process and see that the principal and the staff, it's coming together, and the school is starting to work like a well-oiled machine, instead of, you know, panic and taking, you know, hurrying through things. They've got a process, they know what to do, and they have a plan.
Ruffner was in for three years, and they were out because they, even though they have missed AMOs, they didn't qualify and not be part of the five percent across the state. So they just, yeah. So they were in for three years as far as being priority school, and that's usually a three-year process. The state considers three years to come out.
These turnaround partners that we have, Department of Education, I'm assuming that they're aware that we're going to be applying for a waiver for ten schools to begin before Labor Day, to help with transformation and with student achievement? Do you think they're aware of that?
I'll take that.
Okay.
That's right. They have been involved in our ongoing discussion in terms of the possibilities, because that's what has been couched there, you know, at this point, because of community conversations and that kind of thing. So they know that we are and have been in the process of reviewing our status to determine how, what we need to do to modify our models to accelerate the whole process to go after the student achievement that we know we want to accelerate, I guess.
So there, do you get the opinion that they're supportive of it?
Well, the response that, around which I'm aware at this point, is this centers on the challenge in terms of securing early starts. And so it has been noticed, has been noted as being a huge challenge to be able to secure that. And so we're factoring that into our decision-making as we move forward too.
We were, as a board, the VDOE and VSBA and Center for School Turnaround, whatever the title is, they had a workshop and session on the role of school boards and the whole school improvement turnaround process. I think there's more stuff. We got closed down early because of the weather. But talked about itself, I'm not sure I'm a fan of the whole SIG program, and I think I raised whether or not we had the option of, you know, not taking the money. It just seems a little hamster on the wheel to me. We are bringing in, you know, the superintendent has a plan for, you know, our district and our schools, and we try to weave in all these other mandates that come down, and it just seems to me like there's a whole lot of stuff that is almost like the idea where if you take a challenged school and throw enough stuff at it, and somehow in two or three years, it's going to turn around, but then they punish you, at least in my, from my view, they tend to punish you if you don't turn it around in two or three years. But the initial data and circumstances at the school don't always seem to align with realistically being able to, you know, meet whatever that definition of turnaround is. So in terms of flexibility, you know, how much flexibility is there? And what happens if you, we accept the, we apply for the grant, we accept the money, we say we're going to do certain things in the whatever time period that they say, and then for some reason, you don't meet it, and then they force you to start all over again? What's, can you explain that process, the, what we say we're going to do, when we have to do it, and what happens if you fall short of doing it? And the accountability that's on the district? And what kind of accountability, if any, is on the turnaround partner?
In the VDOE?
Yeah.
I believe the turnaround partner, they're in it with us to win it. I mean, they have a lot on the line, because they have a reputation. And these turnaround partners bring in some of the best educators who come into our schools and begin helping us to work and develop the leadership capacity in the schools. I think you raised some very interesting philosophical points about this whole school improvement process, but we have to believe this, that the school did not get into this shape overnight, and especially at my level, when I look at what's coming in and the deltas. And I do believe that schools should be looked at in terms of the improvements that they make. In other words, if I get students who are two or more years behind, and I bring them up, maybe I'm bringing them up almost to the level, I'm only point five off or something. I've done a yeoman's job, but it hasn't been good enough for, in terms of proficiency for VDOE. So, but you are recognized, because, believe me, Ruffner was truly applauded by VDOE School Improvement Office, because they came out of priority status. So they are raising their scores, even though they didn't meet the proficiency mark. And I think that's what we have to look at. We may not always meet the proficiency mark, but we have to have our schools on a constant progression of improvement. And that's our job, in terms of accountability, to make sure they improve, and to keep our people encouraged and upbeat, because it can be a downtrodden path. And that's part of what we do. Yes, sir?
Along that same line, that's why it's important for the team to pay close attention to progress made related to students mastering elements of the standard. That's why when we talk about conformative assessments monthly, we talk about benchmarks quarterly, that's linked to the curriculum, that's linked to the amount of learning that's taking place. And so that's your best indicator around whether children are learning or not. Now, sometimes, as Dr. Charbonne just pinpointed, if you're starting at a certain point, and you're looking at progress made, many times, there's a huge gap between where you are with that progress and where we know we need to be. And so when you want to gauge success for individual schools, I would suggest that we pay close attention to that. The other piece, for me, centers on what you alluded to around the lead turnaround partners. It is also our responsibility to work as a team with the lead turnaround partners around a plan for each individual schools, and the lead turnaround partners then serve as a component for assisting with moving that plan forward. So everybody has a requirement for accountability in that regard, and that includes lead turnaround partners. And so executive directors, in terms of holding all of the individuals accountable for supporting the needs of the school, that becomes very important, because lead turnaround partners too, there is an amount of money that we pay for them to support our schools. And so we all have to work in tandem, work together to make those things happen. The last thing, in my view, centers on the notion of considering not accepting SIG dollars. Well, when you look at that, those are dollars that are offered to systems to support the school with moving forward for student achievement. If you don't accept those dollars, then you, there's a risk involved, in my view, that when you implement your plan, and you're not successful with the benchmarks or targets that the powers that be have outlined, and you didn't accept support, that may be a glaring issue when that happens. And that's the only, that's not the only reason why we want to accept SIG dollars. The reason, in my view, again, that we would like to, is that so we can have the necessary support for those schools, to help us do the things that we need to do, but we have to have a valuable, significant plan for that, so.
Let me just offer one, one kind of injunction, around the start it, and I certainly understand.
Let me just add, I just.
Oh, no, no, I follow you. I think one of the challenges, I'm sure the staff would speak best to this, with the accountability at the state level and the requirements for school improvement, based on the performance of schools over a certain amount of time. I think our challenge, like other districts, is to find the synergy between our strategies, state requirements, and the support that they provide. And I think that staff has worked really, really hard to do that, and even as we sat in to the one meeting with Vaughn Holloman over at Rosemont, I think as we began to understand exactly what they're requiring, and they understand not only our challenges, but our strategies, and we began to bring those resources together and work together as a team, because, I mean, the reality is, they're not going away. I mean, I didn't know another way to say it. And we began to find that synergy and working together as a team, and using their resources, integrating them with our resources, that we can begin to see movement and get our schools out of priority, and keep them out of, that's, that's, yes, I'm sorry. Brad, Dan, Dan, what, my apologies, sorry. I'm used to it. I'm used to it at home. I'm sorry. Two questions, one really quick one. I don't recall, I would like to see the example of Ruffner, of what changes were made to get us, to how they went from priority status to getting out of that. But my real question is, so what happens now at Ruffner and the other schools, as they come out of priority status, from slipping back to the way they were before? What steps are taken to ensure that that doesn't happen? Because the SIG dollars go away, right?
They're gone.
So the support dollars are gone, so we got to make do with less money.
The idea is that through the process of school improvement, that the, that the improvement process is sustained, in that you have a principal who's been there and brought the school out, they have deeply embedded practices that brought them out, systematic processes, research-based, that they will continue those. And so they continue the process and continue to move forward, continue to make improvements.
Yeah, and even though the SIG funding is gone, it's a Title I school, so they do ask us every year to look at the, you know, the object codes, the coordination of other funding sources, and they look at, as part of sustaining it, you use other local and federal dollars to sustain some of those efforts.
I think we also have to take note of the school improvement process in terms of the lead turnaround partner being able to support, as well with research-based practices that helps the school. So when that turnaround partner goes away, again, that the school is able to sustain the practices that were taught there.
That's the key right there, sustainability.
Yes.
But I also believe, and I worked intimately with Ruffner the past year and a half, and I will say that it's all about the processes and procedures that have been set up, and the fact that the data drives everything they do over there. They do have a really tight model of how they function from day to day.
And can we replicate that around the rest of the school system?
We are, well, I know, I'm working with it in the middle schools, it's easier said than done.
I understand.
And that, it's easier said than done.
But I know Mr. Fraley over there is doing an awesome job.
Awesome.
I'm sorry.
Soliloquy will follow, I warn you. The question is, remember, two years ago, we asked Mr. Fraley to go there? A superlative principal. Superlative. And I believe, and so the key words in my soliloquy is going to be, I believe. I believe that he helped remove barriers from teachers, so they could remove barriers from students. Sure, turnaround specialists, a little bit of disagreement, they are going to go away. Every few years, there's a new flavor in education, and so whatever's been identified, changes regularly. So the folks that you think aren't going to go away, that whole approach will go away. But what is consistently true is if we have a good teacher, a caring, competent committee- But what is consistently true is if we have a good teacher, a caring, competent, committed teacher, and if we have an administrative leader who helps removes barriers from those teachers. So I think that there is an infrastructure. But I believe in you. When this process of setting up y'all as remove, barrier removal specialists was set up, so that as you keep in touch with the principals to help them remove barriers from teachers, so that teachers can remove barriers, I believe in you. So here's the soliloquy, thirty-four years ago, Thomas Good. Thomas Good, anybody remember Thomas Good? Thomas Good's specialty was expectation research. He said, "If you expect them to succeed, they will." People heard that to say, "If we raise standards." So one principal, Dr. Thornton, that, Dr. Thornton was in his county, raised, one superintendent raised the, the, the scores, said, "No longer are we going to do seventy percent, we're going to do seventy-five percent." Now, there's a difference between demanding and expecting. There's a difference between, so I was with Thomas Good thirty-four years ago. And I said, "Dr. Good, are you saying you demand more or you believe more?" He said, "No, it's believe. It's not I'm demanding them to, I believe in them." So I believe in you. I believe that you will believe in those principles. And when you walk in that building, if it's too cold, you try to help make it warmer. If it's too hot, you try to melt and make it cooler. If there's a desk needed, if there's a community, that you will believe in those principles and that they know you will. And that in turn, they will believe in those teachers and help remove barriers. And it gets down to what the kids believe with the teachers, but it's all around the teachers. And as I walked down the halls of thirty schools in this past school year and before all the schools the year before, you can see when a kid sees a principal, you know that that kid believes that principal believes in them. So I believe in you. I believe you have the capacity to believe in those principles and help them remove barriers so they can remove barriers from teachers. It's around what I believe in. And Thomas Good said, "It's not what we demand, it's not what Dr. King is demanding, it's what we're believing. And we believe that you can help turn those things around." Now, those folks at the state level are good people, I was one of them. They're supposed to provide technical assistance, but it gets down to what the classroom teacher does. And for me, what's really important is that they feel you believe in them through their principle. So thanks for sitting through the soliloquy. I choose to believe in you. I'm more than cynical about what Mr. Jordan said. I am very cynical about that and skeptical, but I, what I'm not cynical or skeptical about is that you have the capacity to help principals remove barriers so they can help teachers remove barriers so the kids can move on. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Chair.
And that's a bit of a follow-on to that. What I would say is, as part of the training of last week that we went through in Richmond was, what is, what, what can we do as a board to help support you in this effort as well? Are there policies in your way? Are there policies that you need? Or are there other things that you need? So do consider us as an asset in order to help you be effective, in order for the schools to be effective. Because, again, the training for us last week is, what is our role? And one of the questions was, how engaged are you in terms of policies for teaching plan, blah, blah, blah? So do consider us an asset that can help support you in the turnaround and the removal of barriers.
So, so in that spirit, just have a technical question. The, the state required the teacher and the principal evaluation system that so much of the percentage is tied to. The test scores. I'm sorry?
Student performance.
Yes. So if, if we have teachers and principals who are at some of our most challenged schools, that are, that are showing progress but are still, you know, where they are, in terms of the slide that you had around retaining and attracting, are those, the, under SIG, is there any, is there flexibility or will those, if you are a teacher there and you are working hard, Dr. Charbonne, an example that you gave in showing progress, yet the school as a whole does not reach the benchmark threshold, when that evaluation is done, will the teacher and the principal receive a less than favorable evaluation because of the test scores or the standard of where, or the results of where the school is at that given point in time?
Well, Dr. Ronnie Morris Dobbs is really the expert, there is a formula, thank you. She's worked with us.
The whole system is based on student growth and not necessarily if you're accredited or not. And so if they, if the principal and our teachers show growth, demonstrate growth, then yes, they will be successful. And remember, it's one of the domains or standards, one of seven, but it does account for forty percent. But it only accounts for twenty percent of the forty percent. Because the other twenty percent would be based on the goals that they've established.
So is, the district gets to set the definition of their growth or does the state set the definition of their growth?
Our teaching and learning department establishes the measurement for growth.
I think you asked that question probably because of comments that were made by the state board as they obviously compare one against the other, the actual evaluations over against the student performance.
Because it just seemed like you get different answers. And so my concern would be if the, you know, if, if growth is rewarded, I think that's a good thing. If you can have growth and still be deemed, then I would be concerned that, you know, will we lose teachers bec- or make it even harder to try to get highly effective teachers to want to teach in those schools if they think that unless I'm a miracle worker my language and, you know, do some turnaround in some short time period, and then it shows up negatively on your evaluation? I mean, that didn't seem to be an incentive to want, to go and work in those schools.
It's based on growth, and, and again, it could be as little as ten percent. Because if we use student growth percentiles or SGP, that would account for twenty percent. Goals would be ten and growth would be ten percent. So it just depends on what we use, but it's all based on growth.
Sam, I just want to ask, would it be okay if a school board member wanted to sit down on the shared governance team? Just to observe the interaction between the VDOE and the, and the turnaround partners and the administration, I think that'd be great.
And just to let you know, when we go to Richmond for these meetings, the turnaround partners are invited as well. So the last day we spent with co-hart, the four principals, we were there and our lead turnaround partners.
They were there too.
And we worked the entire day together, yes.
This whole notion of evaluation, gauging growth, understanding how to determine progress toward an absolute and a target, those things are of paramount importance for us. And so as we consider the importance of our evaluations of teachers and of principals, then we have to determine, we have to understand that with schools, we, we have to profile where children are and from, from step one, and then develop targets and expectations for improvement and increases. Now, there are examples of grade increases that teachers can make with students and student learning. Yet the school, as I alluded to earlier, yet the school remains below the absolute. And so when that happens, then there's a possibility that that school could still remain in the category that it has been. So that could be that it would take X amount of time to move and continue to move in the appropriate direction to get us where we need to go. So that's not to be confused as we move forward. And you all mentioned the discussion with the state board and that type of, of piece. And that's important, but I think we all have to understand that we, how to articulate what each school is and capture the progress made. Now, if there's no progress, then we don't have a good message. But we have to have progress in each of our schools that we can market and talk about where we are going. And so, and then that's reflected in the teacher's evaluation, and we can articulate that. However, we cannot have huge examples of poor performance in schools over time consistently and no examples of increased learning in the classrooms, and we don't reflect that in evaluations accordingly. So, you know, you have both of those things. And so I, I would, I feel as if now with what we're doing with using data to drive decision-making, that we're getting better and better with that, and that's a support for teachers because now teachers will be recognized for the real gains that they're making, even in tough situations. And so we have to do a better and better job of communicating that around progress being made with that. And that's the, that's the challenge that we have, that we all have to, have to understand and communicate even to our stakeholders, external stakeholders.
I would say, and I think it's important we receive this presentation, so thank you. And I do know that as a board, we are very interested in progress along the way. Of course, academic achievement, we are always interested in. But in terms of the priority and focus, it's important that we know what's current and what's happening as a board. And that's, again, something that we learned in training. How often do you hear from folks regarding your priority and focus schools? At every board meeting, every other board meeting? What's the frequency? Do you feel like you have good knowledge? And I feel like we need to be educated like we were today more often, frankly. And I think we need to consider adding it to even a small piece of the agenda more frequently in order for us to have more current updates.
Quite frankly, that's where we are in terms of modeling of our work sessions. And, and even today, I've kind of made a mental note that I see the progress in, in terms of getting these reports regularly, haunting in right on the information that, that we need in order to see our progress and determine what support we need to provide. And so I think we're definitely on, on, on the right path. And, and quite frankly, I, I'd see growth in terms of at least clarity of the approach to this work. You know, nobody asked me this, but I'll, I'll, I'll share it. One of the things we, we've had to deal with, obviously, is leadership transition. And I see the team coming together. And, and as, as the team dynamic begins to really gel and those processes and really, you know, crystallizing, clarifying the approach to, to the work, this new approach, you know, cycling results and, and Sam's philosophy of, of delivering this work. You know, I, I, I really, really see some traction being gained here. And, and one, I believe, I believe as well. Got another believer over here, sir. So we get one or two more believers and. So thank you. That was a long thank you.
Keep up the good work. Tell your, tell your principals and the rest of the strategic governors to keep up the good work.
Thank you for the support.
Tell them from the board, we thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is operations. And Rex got a new suit dressed for us.
That new is just the first time I put it on. No, I took the tags off.
Somebody told him he was gonna, someone told him he was going to be on television and dressed for the occasion.
Actually, I put the suit on to meet with the city.
Put your serious suit on.
Don't worry, you're just like the school board.
Okay, two items under consideration, construction management team update and status on the PPEA process. Dr. King, any comments?
Chair, we should leave the board. Operations Department will present an update and information related to construction management, field houses, as well as a status report on the PPEA process. Dr. Simmons.
Dr. Houston, Dr. King, and members of the board, I'm here to accompany Rex Gay as he gives you an update on field houses. So I'm going to give you a briefing on PPEA, we had a meeting today.
So you want field houses first?
Yes.
This is my turnaround partner.
You have a grant for that?
Yeah, I got a grant. And I picked up a portion of the grant last Friday. What I've put in front of you is renderings for Lake Taylor and Booker T. Washington Field Houses. This is a project that Facilities Management and the Public Works Department is working on together. And, was this a clicker here? What you see here is the, of course, the site plan for Lake Taylor. And probably what you can see better in front of you, where you see that yellow circle, it just shows the location of where the field house will go. And I'm going to run you past these pictures that you don't need. Do we get too many? Well, you got them in front of you, right? All right, see, if you look at that second page, of course, that is the rendering for the Lake Taylor Field House. The first, oh, the second and third page. And then, of course, the last page would be the floor plan. And I've also given you a copy of, right there, okay. And then you can roll to the next one. Booker T. Yeah. And Booker T.'s plans actually show the same thing. It shows your location, site plan, it has the renderings. You can keep going to pass that, Janelle. Right there. Renderings and for those two pages and then also the floor plan. So what both of these buildings will be comprised of will be a split face block, which is the same block on the exterior as the interior. And of course, will be, you know, concrete floors, and then they'll get an asphalt shingle roof. So the project actually, or the RFP will be advertised next week. And we expect that back in mid-March and probably would award it by the middle of April. Now, Public Works had tried to probably get these projects or these projects completed by the end of August, but they don't foresee them being completed until probably the first of November. So they won't actually be in time for next year's football season. But they think that's the best they can, they can do.
I guess the question, of course, CIP, what budget year, what fiscal year, and how much?
Oh, both of these projects together probably be a little bit over nine hundred thousand. And this is not in our CIP, this is in the city's budget.
It is in the city's.
Yes.
Okay.
Any, any possibility that they will pull any of our funding to assist with that?
I doubt it. I mean, very seriously. This is, of course, one of the mayor's projects. And so they evidently have the money set aside. And initially, it started out just being Lake Taylor. Of course, when we did those stadiums, the city built them at the same time. So it was suggested sometime back that we, if we did a field house at one, we do it at the other.
Thank the council supported that last year.
Yeah.
Just a follow, just a question on that. In light, I'm, of the two field houses going in, is there any additional opportunity for improvements that you all may have had on your list that we get to piggyback? Or I don't know if you get any, you know, landscaping upgrades or anything else at either of these two schools that is a result of this project? You know, we get the leverage to take advantage of, does Booker T.
As a result of a field house?
Yeah, just that, you know, just in terms, since you're going to have, there'll be folks out there working, doing some things. I know there's a whole laundry list of items that you had given attention to. I didn't know if this allows us to.
No, I think the best that you can expect out of this is maybe some fencing surrounding the field houses that would just ward it off from other fields.
Oh, they're going to isolate it?
Yes.
From the rest of.
In other words, they want to try to, especially at Booker T., on the Virginia Beach Boulevard side, they want to try to isolate the back of it and close it in to the stadium fencing.
Yeah, that's what I was wanting, particularly at Booker T. I mean, there's so much work that needs to be done. I didn't know this might give us an opportunity to get the city to, you know. Pay the parking lot or, you know.
The parking lot that we have is already in this year's CIP.
Landscaping, signage.
Now, these two, take a field house with the class. These two, I mean, there are a lot of variations of field houses, obviously.
Right. You mean, you mean the materials that we're using for these?
No, 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 no. It will house what?
Oh, these are for the away football team and the home team. And then each, each one of them will have, you know, each one of them will have your restrooms inside, but not any showers. And then, of course, each one of them will have a referee's office.
But the other, won't the other teams also be able to use a baseball or track or anything like that?
I'm certain they can. It was just, you know, it was just the idea that they wanted to have it ready before football season started.
What did you say the exterior facade was gonna be?
It's gonna be a split face block.
Do we have an issue with that?
We did have an issue with it. We still have somewhat of an issue to, with it. Of course, Steve has been out with the city engineers, and they've gone out to look at some projects that others have done with the split face block. And, you know, it doesn't seem to be any problems with those. Of course, everybody's not of the same opinion. And, you know, there have been some that said they've seen problems with other, other buildings like these.
Do you feel confident that that's, that material's gonna hold up?
I'm not necessarily that confident, but when we spoke with Public Works and we talked about the budget that exists for these projects, I mean, that's about the best we can do unless we want to put siding on them, which probably wouldn't look as good.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, and for the PPEA update, we have interviewed all three teams. The first interview was January twenty-seven, the second was January twenty-ninth, and then on January thirty-first. So we've interviewed three teams. And there is no commitment yet. We are committed to remain on schedule. We've just gone back to ask the developers for some more information so that we can make a really good informed decision with the selection. So far, we intend to be on schedule. At the most, thirty days, probably under that.
When you said there were some type of community meetings or something that was supposed to take place?
They will take place as soon as we select the developer.
Or after the...
Yes.
And the question is, how can we stay on schedule?
As a part of the interview, those questions were asked of each of the three developers, and we were assured by all three that we can keep the same construction schedule.
Unless you got Superman gonna reverse the spin of the, of the, of the Earth and stop time, go back in time, I don't see how you can do that.
Why, we got...
You got thirty days from today.
We got a lot of work to do to get Brad...
We're in March. And then they're gonna be able to start construction? Okay.
It's more like starting demolition. And, 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 you know, the idea is, once we have made that selection and then we can enter into an interim agreement, then we can start demolition.
Okay. You got questions? Thank you very kindly. You all worked very well together.
Thank you.
Try to support him as best I can.
Okay, as we enter the home stretch of our, of our meeting, just before we get to the, we'll close with remarks, just before we get to agenda planning, Mr. Jordan and I, earlier, had a very brief celebration of no meeting scheduled for the twelfth. However, I am very, very concerned about separation anxiety. And having said that... I'll adjust you and you'll go away. But having still dogs as well. But having said that in all seriousness, of course, on the, on the nineteenth, as we, as we see, as we have had on schedule for some time, we are scheduled to receive the superintendent's proposed budget. And the concern is that, that the superintendent would have from the board, or that we would agree as a governance team, I should say, very clearly on what our priorities are, so that as he moves into the final week of, of developing that, that proposed budget, that it's, it's in alignment with what we have all agreed upon as, as it relates to our priorities. Now, last week, we received a good deal of information. And I know we're real close to getting the one-pager that, that will, that will show the five-year cost slash needs that, that we received in seven critical areas of our, of our work. So the proposal, the recommendation is that we would come back together next Wednesday for two hours. And the objective would be for us to really clarify as a governance team what our priorities are as we look at, of course, the, the five-year cost, the needs for fiscal year fourteen, fifteen, and then over the next four years. So the recommendation is that we will consider a four to six meeting next Wednesday for that purpose. Yes, sir?
I'd like to respectfully request that you back that up a little, for your reason. I have a serious choice about where to be on that day. I have the choice of being with y'all or of having that colonoscopy on schedule.
That's a tough choice.
Let me think about that now. Which is worse?
Well, all of Norfolk knows now.
The second, the second choice occurs, the second choice occurs early in the morning, and I need to ask for medical guidance. Do you think I'll be able to join y'all later in the afternoon? So, once again, I could come in by speakerphone. But I think, I think I could be ready by five o'clock, having, having had this joy before. Having had this joy before, I think if I could be there by five, I would appreciate the delaying it slightly, just, just, just to get... No, I, I've been through before.
You don't have to take meds. You can just do it.
Sililoquy on meds, that should be interesting.
I know it's a tough choice, and I'm not sure which is gonna be more joyous. But I, I would like to be part of, part of this process, since I missed the last one. And I'm not sure that I really communicated adequately what my priorities were. So I would like to be with y'all, but I would like a little bit of delay time so that I can walk, crawl, or ride here.
So, so how many of us could do five?
I'll look, I'll look forward to it.
Yeah, six, six, six-thirty, six-forty-five, I would definitely need to transition. But I think we have enough information, we can get the heart of our work done, you know. That's, that's, Lejeune Richter?
The public forum is the twelfth, the night that you're referring to.
Yeah. That starts at?
Starts at six-thirty at Norview High School on the twelfth, if that's the date of question.
Yes.
It's also principal's four-day.
Is that, is that the public forum for the demographic?
That's one of the two, yes.
Lunch is at twelve.
There's another one on the eleventh.
A lunch at...
I've already got that one.
Do we wanna, do we wanna meet over at Norview? Let's start a little bit earlier. At Norview High School.
At six-fifteen or six?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty, Norview High School.
Do we wanna meet over there at five?
I could make Norview easier, 'cause it's less distance to crawl.
Can we do four-thirty and then?
All right, so, Norview? Are you saying we need to be at the Lejeune Richter meeting?
Well, I was...
No, it's just a possibility.
Right. No, no, we don't. I was just, I didn't know, other folks that were gonna be there need to be a part of the meeting, so I was trying to...
I know the staff.
Be considerate of, so, I mean, in a conversation like that, we may have questions for, for staff.
I would appreciate being at this one, because I have some serious statements that I have to make. And I don't want them to be in by speakerphone, 'cause I didn't do a good job last time.
You did a fantastic job.
Well, no, I was in the holding area of the airport, and when I finished, a whole group of Italian citizens applauded. But I don't think they understood a word I said. So, you know, the, the situation is, I've got some serious points that are critical, and I've gotta say them.
They were applauding because of your constant reference to the emperor.
But you know what? I thought, retrospectively, I thought about that. And I'm not sure who the emperor was in that story.
But, but Kurt, for the rest of today's meeting, today's meeting, it's four-fifteen, we're supposed to technically be here till six. What, what else do we have left on the agenda?
Agenda planning.
Agenda planning, so...
Which will be very, very quick and painless.
So do we want to...
Oh, we have this.
Do...
Yes.
Report from Washington DC.
Yes.
Remember, we want to share when we go to conferences.
Your question is, do you want to do it now?
We want to share information.
But we don't have the information.
We don't have the flow sheet.
No, we don't.
It's the eleventh.
I think the part of the situation was, is there something we could get into now? So where are we on meeting next, next Wednesday? Five o'clock? Can you give us an hour and a half?
Norview?
What does hinder us?
Norview?
Do we need to, do we need to be at Norview for staff?
That's probably more convenient, in case we need some staff in for additional comments.
It'll be chaotic. What about the eleventh? Can't do the eleventh. No, never mind. Brett can't do the eleventh.
Can't do eleven, but you, nine, four, five, no. I see patience till six, six.
Okay.
We're back to Wednesday, the twelfth, right?
That...
Five o'clock at Norview?
Got it.
Okay. And can I make a recommendation? There's a lot of information that we're gonna have to go with. I know Warren's gonna come in at five. I would suggest we start a bit early.
I don't want to miss any of this. The reason why is I have important things...
Think about rescheduling your colonoscopy. I mean, I get patients rescheduling every day. Now we get down to it. That's what's up.
So you're, you're here to make it, help me make a choice between colonoscopy and spending time with you. I just, I don't know what to pick.
Why don't we hear, why don't we hear your important points now?
Say again?
Why don't we hear your important points now?
And then you can start early?
And I'm just... No, we're not gonna start and then not finish the conversation.
Yeah. At, at five o'clock, and, and, is there something that helps you come out of anesthesia quicker? Do you have something like that?
No, so, so Dr. Houston, you have, you say you have a hard stop?
I do.
Now, what is your comfort level? I mean, no matter what, we, we keep going back, 'cause somebody's gonna be missing. So...
I'd like to be on my horse by six-fifteen.
I guess I'm asking...
Yes. So, so for, for, for me, you know, I definitely need to walk out of the building since four-five.
And can I just clarify that the purpose of that meeting and the desired outcome is that we all walk out of there with a good discussion of the budget, so that Dr. King has a good sense of where we all are as a governance team in terms of budget priorities, so that he can better build a budget that is then proposed to us on the nineteenth. And without that opportunity for Dr. King to have our input based on all the data that's gonna be put together on this spreadsheet by Dr. Thornton, we can't do that tonight. And that's what next Wednesday's, so the outcome is to come out with a consensus if we could.
Now, here's what helps us, in my opinion. One, we receive very clear information from, from Dr. King on what we should protect, what we should expand, or consider expanding, and implementation. Now, that, that was...
That was in this, that you...
No, no.
This partially was in this.
Partially in there, yes. Yeah. So that, that's really, really clear. So that, that has to be a major part of, of the conversation, in, in my opinion. Then we have the five-year cost and needs. We had a good conversation on yesterday. The learning was a big part of that conversation. And so I, I think we are equipped with the information we need to, 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 to move toward clarifying and agreeing upon those priorities. And I know we have probably eight different sets of priorities, or at least...
I don't think so.
Now, when I say that, I mean, in terms of emphasis and passion. I mean, you, you have a speech you'd like to make, obviously. You have a framework in your mind, and as do others. But, but having said that, we, we need to find synergy and be able to communicate as one voice to the very best of our ability, so, so, so that the proposed budget is not far away from the thinking of the governance team. Do you believe we can do that?
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to...
I believe.
I'm a skeptic. But the, I just want to understand the, the, the outcome again. So we, we had a list, we had a one-sheeter of priorities that I thought kind of married what the administration gave us and what we talked about, whatever it was, December or sometime earlier. Are we now just trying to say of what's on that list to prioritize that list? Or what? Wes, I'm trying to help me to understand what we're looking at.
Okay, so, so we have a five-year outlook, cost, needs, and there is safety net enrichment, personal development, teaching, I mean, technology, services, yada, yada, yada. And we have the one-sheep piece that superintendent provided. Now, with all of this information, based on the strategic plan, what's our, what are, what are, what are our priorities for fiscal year fourteen, fifteen? And then how do we lay out the others for the additional four years? Because here's what we don't want to do, in my opinion. We don't want to, and I keep saying that like I would be speaking to medicine. We don't want to request additional funding for any one thing in isolation and not connected to the, to the, to the full picture of what it is we're trying to accomplish and how we want to accomplish it over the next four to five years. And that's why we need to be very clear and strategic. And as I said a moment ago, I think it's important that the superintendent's proposed budget is, is, is not far away from the governance team's thinking. So that when we get it on the nineteenth, we're gonna have another six, about six more weeks there to, to agree upon our proposed budget to the, to the city. And so we need to be as close together in that recommended budget as we, as we can, proposed budget.
Oh, go ahead, Warren.
I'm behind you.
Okay. I mean, it, it doesn't really seem that difficult to me.
Okay.
Because we have an obvious gap of around thirteen million dollars.
Well, that's what we know now.
That's what we know.
Without any add-on.
That's what we know now. It doesn't include four for pre-K. It doesn't include all the subjects.
It doesn't, it doesn't include any of that. So, and we, we know that we want to maintain teacher-people ratios. We know that we want to maintain safety nets, and we want to continue on, what? Yeah, but there were three that, that Sam had mentioned in the presentation yesterday, that the absolute most protect.
Differentiate pay for art, for school position.
And, and so, so those, those are things that we're going to, and that's without us making any cuts. We, because in that budget, we've not cut a single thing, not a single school, not a single position, not a single program, not a single anything, with the exception of our travel expenses.
And the ads got right across on that.
Present to us, though, was gonna be a column of potential cuts of what we could do by looking at.
So, so, so are we, are we, are we looking at potential cuts?
That's supposed to be on that spreadsheet.
And then, and then this, this sheet, the five-year outlook, I don't, I don't think that we need to necessarily prioritize what we give to council. I think they're gonna, they're, all of these things are things that are gonna be needed, because we're, we're already in the hole with so many of them. So I think we should put everything that we need on the five-year plan, everything. And, and then we can tell them, you know, from here, okay, well, a CTE school is, is not...
We don't present a five-year budget to council.
I, we don't, but we need to.
Well, that's what the spreadsheet can do well, is that it will set out the five-year roadmap, and then what it's gonna be in fourteen, fifteen, but with other columns, I think, that do delineate what we need to cut and otherwise. So then there's the big picture.
Right.
And then next Wednesday, after having seen that big picture, we need to decide what we're gonna propose.
In the big picture plan?
Can I, can I just share maybe process and then what? That would be helpful. We'll come out of the process?
Sure.
Of course, you know, Dr. King has to present a budget two weeks from today. And the idea is that based on the information you've seen, that has the thirteen point seven million dollar gap, right now, we're focused on how do we close that gap to maintain where we are in terms of a service level. Then, based on the five-year needs that have been discussed, and at some point, we'll... Then, based on the five-year needs that have been discussed, and at some point, we'll kind of solidify those in addition to what Dr. King would present on the 19th as a baseline budget. We have these needs. So from a process standpoint and trying to manage the decisions, we can present to you Dr. King's proposed budget to, that basically is going to close that gap, maintain the level of service, and then in addition to that, there could be a supplemental document that reflects these additional needs that would require additional funding beyond what Dr. King's baseline budget would request. Does that make sense? So we will present, we will present, just like we did last year, we will present a budget and we'll show you how we got there through cuts and whatever the revenue assumptions are. And then you'll have that additional supplemental document that says, this is what our need, these are our needs going beyond what Dr. King presented. Now, from the board's perspective, what do you want us to do to add to that? In essence, we would be adding, asking the city council to do this above whatever we present. Does that, does that make sense?
I mean, it makes sense, but that conversation is always different. I follow you, but I'll get these other comments and then I'll-
We've got a little time, and I need five minutes because we need to have a process to share conference attendance information with one another-
Well, I promise you-
-to maximize the benefit of those conference attendants. And that's what I have here for five minutes.
You can count on-
But I need to ask Dr. Thornton a couple of questions. Number one, did we cause the gap that we have? I know the answer to the question. Or was this caused by call shesting from the state, reductions? I was there asking our senators and our House of Representatives members yesterday about ESA reauthorization, probably not going to happen. We, it wasn't anything that Dr. King and your colleagues did to cause that reduction. It wasn't. Did you make mistakes? Did you do something goofy?
No, I honestly didn't receive that type of question.
I'm an auditor.
I don't know exactly what, I don't know exactly what my predecessors did or did not do in making the decisions. But I know from a revenue perspective, the state imposed some significant cuts in response to their challenges-
Yes, they did.
-with the recession. We also have had declining enrollment that have impacted our state revenue decline.
But that's not what y'all did.
Right, right, right. On the expenditure side, the gap is also being driven by some of the expenditure decisions that have been made trying to address the needs of our students. Not questioning the need, but some of the things that we have done-
Reading math specialists.
-have long-term, sustainable cost implications. Adding the 80 reading and math specialists.
Right.
So we can't say it was not based on decisions that we had control over. On the expenditure side, we had control over some. On the revenue, obviously, we didn't. So it's a combination.
The reason why I ask this, on this day, for three years, I've been trying to get a long-term planning process started. For 40 years, I've tried to implement that. I have some big things to say, and I think it's possible, but I'm not going to operate within the constraint of believing we have to ask the city to help us with the number that is equal to the number that Dr. Thornton's working in. It's not our fault. It's not the children's fault, they need more. And so I don't walk into this meeting knowing that we have to first find the reductions before we can start asking for what we want. I don't walk into that meeting. But I walk into the meeting with some very serious things that I want to talk about. And I predict a convergence on this board with Dr. King representing the school system. I predict a convergence that we're going to be surprised by. I think we already know some of the things that we want to start. Can we finance them in one year? No. But the reason for presenting an annual operating budget within the context of five years is so people can see that we can start something next year and that the city council has been telling us for three years, tell us what you really need. And that's what I want to do.
So let me ask you this. Obviously, we have to, the superintendent has to present a budget. Now, the question is always raised, is it, does he present a balanced budget? He presents a budget based on needs in accordance with the strategic plan. It has to be with respect to the reality of the current revenue and expenditure reality. Having said that, I would like to see us avoid, as a governance team, getting to the point in a couple of weeks where the superintendent's proposed budget is light-years away from our philosophical thinking and planning as a governance team. The purpose of the conversation next week would hopefully move us closer to alignment in his thinking at least about what we've agreed as a governance team are our priorities so that even as he moves forward and making decisions to close that gap, it's in alignment with that thinking. Does that-
Yeah.
That would be the purpose of the conversation. Not to tell him what to propose in the budget, but at least we agree in principle on the priorities and those things that we are certainly going to focus on for the next school year. Sam?
Oh, I'm sorry. Hearing what Dr. Thornton just mentioned, I'm going to try to recap. And I'm not so sure that I'm going to be precisely on target with my recaps. But Dr. Thornton mentioned the whole notion of presenting a budget that's balanced and then another supplemental piece that reflected other needs. Now, here's the question I think we have to consider. And here's where you can redirect me here, Dr. Thornton. That sounds very similar to last year to me. And so, because we presented a balanced budget first.
Right.
And then, yes, and then we modified that to quote-unquote, reflect the real needs of the system to move forward.
Right.
Okay? So I want to avoid that kind of double-layer approach, if possible. Now, if it's not possible, I totally understand. So with that thinking in mind, here's the question I think that the governance team has to consider and answer. We are already working around some budget balancing strategies. And so you've seen examples of some of those. We're not done. So we can quantify that. And once we quantify the budget balancing strategies, then that's going to be subtracted from the current gap. When you, we determine, of course, we're aligned with the priorities and what we know we will keep, what we know we're saying we must add in order to move forward, and what we know we must expand, then those will have price tags. If we utilize that, provide that to Dr. Thornton, then if that's merged into that budget, it's going to tell us a story because there will be a bottom-line amount reflected in that budget. And when you compare that to the amount of funding from the previous year, it's going to give you the difference, which is going to be a positive number. And once you look at that, that tells everybody that we need X amount in addition to what we received the previous year. In my view, that's one budget. That's one recommendation aligned to the strategic plan and aligned to the priorities that you pinpointed. So now, when we look at that and you say that we're comfortable with going forward to council to present that, then there will have to be joint conversation around whether or not they're in agreement with funding X amount of dollars. I hope that's as clear as much, but that's a little bit different, I think, Dr. Thornton, than what you mentioned. But those two can merge into one request.
And we have to have clarity because, quite honestly, it takes the budget staff basically a week to pull all of this together to make sure that the comprehensive document, all the numbers flow through.
Right.
It's been fully vetted and, you know, proofread and everything. So once we release it publicly-
Right.
-it's ready to go. So, you know, this time next week, we've got to have it nailed. And if it's not nailed, then what I mentioned earlier might be, we might be forced to kind of go down that path.
So does the conversation on Wednesday set you back, given that?
I mean, we're still moving towards dealing with the 13-7.
Sure.
So whatever Wednesday, whatever happens Wednesday, we'll, we would have already dealt with 13-7. And then whatever you all decide Wednesday will give us direction, we'll add that too, as Dr. King described it.
And then that will allow us to bring forth one budget reflective, right? If we are able to meet-
For 14-15.
Yes.
But then we will still have that supplemental document to say, these are our multi-year needs-
Right.
-beyond what's in the current year's budget.
So, in my view, that's a little different. Because now we're coming forward with one budget for the upcoming fiscal year. But then the supplemental piece will be beyond that fiscal year. Here's what we see.
So in the five-year forecast, are we going to try to incorporate the first year into the budget? Into the one-year budget? Is that what we're going to try to do? So that way, we're not really presenting a balanced budget. We're going to present a budget of need. And I'm fine with that.
Which is what I think Dr. King was saying. That once we do that, then it's going to result in X needs-
Yes.
-above available resources. So then we're saying to council, we need additional-
Right, right. But we need to understand, though, that the budget for fiscal year 14-15 is one document. The supplemental piece is, that can be an addition, an appendix. But what we present is a fiscal year budget. We don't do it by annual, by annual, but I can't say what, by annual budget or by, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Then, just to look down the road a little bit more, from a decision standpoint, if we present that to council, whatever that is, then if we, it's not going to be fully funded, then we need to be prepared to decide what comes off.
That's what, that's what I want to see.
And we don't want to lose sight of what we've added-
Right.
Right.
-to the base. That's what, so, because then that, the opportunity to go through that process is even shorter than what we have now.
The purpose of having it within a five-year context is that the community, our colleagues, the teachers, everyone needs to see that we know where we're going. We know the destination.
Sure.
This, but we can't do it in one annual operating year-
Right.
-without also trying to employ CIP resources that haven't been done in Norfolk before Dr. Thornton and Dr. King got here. So there's some things there. And then after April 1st, between April 1st and May 15th, they may come back to us and say, eh, you don't get that. We understand, then we're back at the drawing board trying to figure out what we do next. But at least we have to tell the truth, to be honest, and to speak long-term about what we really need. And we've got to do it at some point. We could keep putting it off year after year. The reason why we put it off four years ago, three years ago, two years ago, is because the economy was in a downturn, resources were down and everything else. But the city council have told us for three years, tell us what you really need. We've got to do that.
Did you hear that this year?
Yeah. I did.
I was not, I was in a-
This year?
Councilman Pratagiro?
Yes.
At our first meeting, joint meeting, and I've heard it from Mayor Frank, and I've heard it from people when I was interviewing-
Dr. Whibley.
Dr. Whibley.
She said it repeatedly.
And you've heard it several times?
Yes.
This is not a new ask?
Good.
And actually, Councilwoman Schmigle as well.
And again, it's not just tell us what you need, it's tell us what your anticipated forecast is so that we can have an idea, so that if we need to plan about buying property versus, you know, funding technology teachers, that you all are first in line to get these funds. And then maybe this land purchase can wait because they understand the dire need for Norfolk as a city to develop a world-class educational system so that we can attract business partners, so that people will come here. They will choose to send their kids to Norfolk Public Schools. And if they invest in it, they will be in turn getting an investment back out of it. And so, if we want to call it a supplemental document, a wish list, a five-year outlook projection, whatever we're going to call it, I think that this year, we're clear. We're, as opposed to last year where we did, kind of got a budget, and then we were like, oh, wait a minute, we really do need those 80 math and resource teachers, and we need the safety net. The communication piece of it was a little difficult. We had a brand-new board, brand-new superintendent. It was, you know, we were all going through this almost like a first time together. But this year, I think we, we've all been talking the same language. We know we have to be within a budget. We know we cannot spend more than what we're allotted. But at the same time, we want to communicate what the realistic needs are of the district because of all of the spending cuts and the, as Warren said, the unfunded mandates that have been implemented on us for so many years. So we need to be very clear about this, exceptionally clear. Because if we're not, it's just going to be, it's going to be a direct result on the students of Norfolk Public Schools. And we can't let that happen for them. We have to be their voice.
Rodney?
The strategic plan. I guess my, I would just put out there that whatever we do next week or in between, if we're asking for things that are not in the strategic plan, then we need to update our strategic plan to reflect the ask. If there are things in the strategic plan that we're saying are no longer a priority, then we need to alter the plans that are in the strategic plan to reflect it. I thought the agreement was, is that the strategic plan would reflect our priorities and our work over the next five years. And that would lay the framework for the five-year budget in that, you know, the things that we didn't get done this year, plus the things we were projecting next year, would serve as the framework for this discussion. And if that's not the case, then I think we undercut and undermine the strategic plan. So, for example, the strategic plan had some focus in there on pre-K roundups and some other things. The discussion that we heard yesterday was much different. You know, talking about eliminating the waiting list is much different, in my reading, of what's currently in the strategic plan. So if we say that that's going to be a priority, for whatever reason, opportunity, conditions change, I just think it's important that we tie this stuff back to the strategic plan. Otherwise, throw it out the window. Because if the strategic plan doesn't have any value or weight in terms of, you know, all the things that we do, our work sessions, our evaluations, our funding, our priorities, and all those things, then we will have chaos. And so I would just ask, if we're going to meet next week, that we take the time to go back and review what's there and then have, be prepared, and maybe we need to send it in advance to say that some conditions have changed and we're recommending to the staff and the community of stakeholders, we want to make some changes. Because there's a lot of things that we're talking about that just seems to me is not aligned with year one, year two of this plan. And somehow, this stuff has to align, in my opinion.
Okay, just do remember too, it's a five-year strategic plan, and not everything can be funded in one year.
Correct.
So there still may be things that we need to talk about now that would be three, four, five years out.
I agree.
Which goes back to knowing what the aligned plans are to the strategies.
Yes.
Which goes back to the reconstituted strategic plan that we need to have. It'll be a populated importance row, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes. All right, close.
One last thing. I got to say, there is always emerging circumstances.
Yes, yes.
We write a lesson plan as a teacher. We write an annual plan as a superintendent. President puts a State of the Union out there, and then things emerge.
Yes.
So we, a strategic plan is a guide, but we, we're setting out big markers of destinations here. If we're talking five years, we're, we were part of that discussion. I'm going to predict there's a lot of elements of what it is we've been talking about for these big markers for five years. And therefore, for next year's annual operating, it's going to be there. But there may need to be some tweaking. And then, between now and five years from now, something's going to come up.
Oh, of course.
Let's say a hurricane hits a school. Let's say school has a particular unusual new need because a facility is deteriorating. Things will come up. We have to, we, teachers have to be flexible, we have to be flexible. So I, but I think it could be aligned, Mr. Jordan, I think easily, that the strategic plan could be aligned to reflect the big markers, the big destinations we're going to talk about.
Okay. And so we'll have the information that we need no later than Dr. Thornton, because it's one page.
Yeah, it's in draft form now.
Okay. So we can expect it by- So we can expect it by, hey, put you on the spot.
I mean.
We're all recording it.
I mean, we have a draft of it right now.
As far as he's concerned, his work is done. He's trying to get us to do our work.
You know, it, it, it doesn't have some of the compensation initiatives at this point because I think, uh, we've got a different strategy for dealing with that. But, yeah. It has the major components, the technology, the facility maintenance, the new construction that was identified in, in Rex's, uh, draft document. It has the professional development for both division-wide and transformation. It has the open campus. It has those five or six major categories or program needs. And it's spelled out over a five-year period. Does it need vetting from the standpoint of programmatic and execution? But the numbers are there. The numbers are there.
And, and I think that's an important point you make, in terms of vetting of the team, you know. And so, what we, what we shouldn't do, it'd be poor leadership, in my opinion, is to rush this without, that, that your core team have an opportunity to look at it. So when we get it to something that you all are very comfortable with, that is factual, uh, that it's, uh, you know, cohesive, and that as we run with it on, uh, on, on Wednesday, uh, that, that we're, we're, we're working from a document that everybody is comfortable with. And so, if, if that means, as, as we discussed earlier, Monday, you know, we get the finished product and that, you know, you have had sufficient time to, to review it, that you're comfortable with it. I, I think that's, that's reasonable.
Putting the numbers on one page was easy. It's what the numbers represent that needs to make sure we're all on the same page.
So does that give you the time to, to, to sufficiently review and scrutinize?
I'll defer to my colleagues.
Yes?
They say yes.
All right, now I'm asking. Okay, okay. I got you. I, I, I promise you.
I know that you, I know.
But let, let, let me clear this agenda matter quickly, and then we'll, then we'll.
So, uh, what time exactly are we?
Five o'clock at Norview.
Five o'clock at Norview.
Okay. Okay. And, uh, do you need Brad to pick you up?
We, we've already set. I can pick him up.
Okay. So with, with, with the agenda, let's take, uh, a, a, a moment. And I wanna, uh, offer a suggestion on how we approach, uh, our agenda conversations at the end of each meeting. Typically, the next agenda is, is, uh, is, is pretty much planned, uh, on the, on the nineteenth. The only difference in our newly agreed upon model is that we're inserting that open informal meeting ti- meeting time again after the closed executive session, uh, for the superintendent's proposed budget. So let, let, let me back up and go from the beginning. We will start together on the nineteenth at, uh.
Eleven thirty.
No, no. At, at, at one P M. At one P M, uh, the superintendent will do a presentation to us, uh, in preparation for his mid-year evaluation. That's from, uh, one until three. At three, we will have our regular executive session to consider student support, uh, and personnel matters. Come out of that. And at four P M, uh, an open informal session where we will receive the superintendent's proposed budget. Everybody with me so far? That will take us to, uh, until about six thirty. Dinner and transition to our business meeting or formal session. And you see there, the items, uh, on, uh, that agenda.
I'm confused. My, mine has eleven thirty meeting with, uh, Ms. Wilson. Is that not true?
Oh, we do. That's right. We do have the V S B A president.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
That, that, you're absolutely right.
Pretty clear, as an addition.
Right.
We're having lunch with, uh, the V S B A president.
That's correct. And, and by the way, of course, that morning, we'll be touring three schools with her.
Who's a week?
Whoever would like to, to, to join us.
Didn't know that.
And that'll be, uh, starting at Gant, and, uh, I mean at PB Young, then Lindenwood, then Gant. Okay? Yes. Yes. PB Young, Lindenwood. Eight forty-five at PB Young. Yes.
Are we going to be combining the, um, personnel matters and the student support matters from the twenty-second meeting?
Yes.
With this meeting? Okay.
It might be a part of that, yes.
Okay. And then, um, on the consent agenda, are we discussing the gifted program at all? Are we?
Well, um. Of course, it was on the twenty-second's agenda.
Right.
Um, are there additional, uh, do you wish to have time?
I don't need any time, I'm just wondering when we're gonna take a vote on it.
Uh, because we will merge the consent agenda from the twenty-second with, with this one.
Okay. And then that's fine then.
Okay.
All right. And then my last question, uh, is, uh, Rodney and I, we discussed at our last meeting, the waivers.
Mm-hmm.
For the, uh, ten schools. Uh, do we need to take any action on that on the nineteenth? Do we need to take any action on that at all, or?
Yes, we would. Yes, we would have to take action on that.
Do we do a.
And I would like, uh, time to, uh, also add my conversation and meetings with my staff to drive that as well.
Okay.
So that's a possibility.
You're, you're absolutely right. Um, uh, Sam, do we need to take action sooner than the nineteenth?
No, 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 no. I'm saying, um, I still have some steps that I need to take with staff to determine.
Okay.
Whether, you know.
Okay.
We go left or right, let's just say.
Okay.
But isn't, what you're not saying is? Because I, I thought we were trying to, I actually thought we were gonna do it today. But you're saying we would do it, you, you, we, the schedule allows for us to wait until the nineteenth? Is that what you're saying?
So because now, bottom lining it, my discussion could center on not even recommending going forward with it. So.
Are we pulling the waivers?
I didn't, I didn't say yes at this point, but there's a possibility.
Thank you.
Not open campus?
I got you.
Okay. That's different.
Got it.
Open campus is done deal.
Remember I was in.
Okay.
I was in the middle of an.
Okay. Uh, any questions on the nineteenth's agenda?
We'll just be updated the board docs.
Yes.
And the lunch with, uh, the V S B A president is here.
Yeah, the only thing to lunch was, we, we normally have lunch before our meeting.
Right.
And she was in town, so just inviting her to the lunch, and just moved it up a half hour so we could.
Yeah.
Have time with her and, you know, get on about our business. So the lunch is something that we would normally do anyway. It's just a half hour earlier.
And it's, and it's informal.
Yes, anybody who's available, it's nothing that says change your whole schedule.
She told me yesterday she likes greens, Ms. Backs.
We have it covered.
She does.
We already have it covered.
All right.
Okay. So, uh, uh, no, 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 no questions or comments on the nineteenth, correct?
I understand and I support.
Okay. On the fifth, uh, we will come together and meet at twelve for the board to, uh, have our discussion around the mid-year, uh, evaluation that begins at twelve noon. Okay? That's on, we're going to the fifth now. We've been done with the nineteenth, the fifth of March.
What time to start?
Now, now, if you don't, if you don't feel the need to go there today, we don't have to. That's our next work session.
No, that's how we, that's what we discuss as the process.
Okay. So, uh, uh, we will begin the work session at two. And, uh, and here's what I want us to keep in mind, is that there is a, uh, a format now that we have embraced. And I'm not saying that it can't change. I'm saying, there's a format where we receive, uh, uh, reports from each department. And those, those reports are in alignment with, uh, the, the, the work that's being done in accordance to the strategic plan as we have received since November, given this model. So, so you don't see a departure from that norm on this agenda. The question I would raise is, uh, or questions are two, two. One, is there something that you don't see on this agenda, uh, that you would like to recommend that we consider fitting onto it? Other question, is there particular information that, uh, from the various departments that you think are critical for that March fifth report that you'd like to recommend we receive? Now, that's a lot to consider in this moment, but, uh, uh, but those, those are the two questions I would present. Yes.
Given the nature of the time of the year and what we're gonna be doing on the nineteenth. I would predict that you don't want to freeze it up so much, that there isn't a cushion in there for something that will emerge. Could be something around the budget, could be something around anything. I, I, I just think if we freeze these agendas and say, that's the only thing we're gonna talk about. And then the hurricane comes and we gotta talk about it, that we say, no, we don't have time to talk about it.
Yeah, well.
I think we've got, particularly at this time of the year, there may be something emerging. So I would want there to be, uh, contingencies.
I think flexibility is always important, but, but, but we have a budget hearing to follow the agenda. Just keep this in mind.
All right.
Uh, that, that, that there's no, uh, uh, new energy being created. And so, if we, if we add something to the budget, I mean budget, to the, uh, agenda, some comes off the agenda.
That's what I'm saying. I would want to build in, uh, contingencies at this time.
Okay. So, so, so just know, what, if you, between now and then, if someone recommends an additional item.
We start at two o'clock, so that does give us a bit of flexibility right then and there.
But typically, the way we plan it, we plan it with items, presentations and discussion, with ti- you know, and it's timed. And, and so, uh, and I'm not saying we can't be, we can't or shouldn't be flexible. I'm saying, you got to move something, you add something.
And all I'm saying is, my life's experience tells me that may happen at this time of the year.
Sure. Okay.
We present our budget to the city on the end of March?
April first is what it's due to the city, yes.
Okay. So I would probably say that our agendas thereafter probably should have some cushion to have budget discussion.
Typically, there's an extra meeting we, we, we insert in March.
We've already inserted two.
We.
We have a March twelfth meeting and, uh, March nineteenth.
And twenty-sixth.
And the twenty-sixth meeting, I, I was, uh, I, I do, uh, I depart for Israel on that, on the twenty-sixth. And, uh, so hopefully we'll be.
But if we're, if we get, if we get the superintendent's proposed budget on the nineteenth.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, um, in the format that we've kinda just discussed, which I'm totally in support of. Then how much do you anticipate us having to change that budget? Yeah, I mean.
So we get public comment, uh.
Because it's not going to council. It's just, we're just, at that point, we're just waiting to submit it to council.
No. Uh, we kinda then have to do our due diligence, you know.
Okay.
So it's a lot more.
Because we're, we're, what we're trying to avoid is him, the submission of a budget and then us coming back and saying.
Making major changes.
Making major changes, which I don't want to do.
I agree with you on that.
So that's why the budget on the nineteenth needs to be as solid as it can be. Because that's gonna be the public document. That's gonna be the superintendent's proposed budget.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Will we not propose it?
I'm, I'm, I'm asking.
Yes.
So, um, doesn't, I mean, we'll just, I just think we should have extra wiggle room in, in April then. We'll keep this stuff for March, but I'm just saying in April's agenda.
What do we need it for April for?
Because we submit the budget to the city council on April the first. And they may choose to fund everything, they may not choose to fund everything. But when they submit it back to us, that's when we're gonna have to, right?
That's around May, I wanna say.
Okay, May.
Yeah.
May, so.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, so for March fifth, any, uh, based on what you see before you, are there any recommendations, uh, at this time for that date? Okay. And so, if, I mean, if things come up, please, you know, uh, go ahead.
So let me just throw out one potential complication.
Sure.
Each year, we schedule a board meeting on the same day as the V S B A regional meeting. So we've done that again on the nineteenth. So, and I'm just looking at what's on paper for the nineteenth. I don't know if there's any way to, uh, uh, move up, move around, adjust.
Yeah. Uh, we, we, we've moved, uh, there are a couple of times a year where we move either, in, in this case, changing into the, uh, previous Wednesday wouldn't be good because we have every Wednesday meeting for budget. But, but, uh, there are times when we move the Wednesday meeting to, to Tuesday, um, so.
And then, that, that's bad.
It's Thursdays?
Well, I'm just, I'm not saying figure it out now, but I'm just saying that we.
Well, since it's for March nineteenth, we, we kinda need to know where we're going with it.
Well, I'm just trying to throw out there whether it's, uh, you know, all the things that you have on the nineteenth agenda, is there's way to, uh, distribute it.
Sure, sure.
You know, the fifth, the twelfth, and maybe what's after. And it may, we may still have a business meeting, but at least.
I think that's our regular.
Yeah, I know.
So let me just ask this question. Uh, Thursday, out of the questions, anybody?
What Thursday, you're talking, the twentieth?
Yes. You can't do Tuesdays or Thursdays?
Monday, Tuesday and Thursday afternoon, I see patients till six P M. But I guess I could cancel them.
Since they can cancel all the time. No, no, I, no, I, no, I respect you. I respect your bread butter.
I just, it's, you know, we talked about it.
This is from February?
Last year, sorry.
March.
So I was surprised when I saw.
Yeah.
You attend the regional meeting, you and who else?
No, we're always supposed to.
That's the one we have, where we have, uh, what's her name?
Yeah. Last year.
Yeah.
Last year, we had the conflict because some, with the budget hearing and.
Yeah.
And we were the host.
Yeah, the, the city's budget hearing.
Right. Yeah, that's correct. Williamsburg.
I'm starting now.
No, Monday, Tuesday. Monday, Tuesday.
Well, they, they. Before they schedule the date, that's why I was trying to. They always check with all the.
Okay. I mean, you guys can go ahead and have the meeting. I, you know, I haven't missed a meeting in three years and.
At that time of the year, you wanna be there.
I do.
I understand.
Do we have to decide this tonight?
No, I just wanted to put it out there.
Y'all can come out hours.
Um, Kurt, we, we're supposed to get a presentation from Deion Richter on February the twenty-eighth. Um, recommendation to the school board, is that gonna be discussed on the March fifth meeting?
Is it on a schedule, is it on a schedule for us?
That should be on the, that's a very good point, Noel. It should, that should be part of the discussion on the fifth. So we'll make that adjustment. We have an agenda planning meeting this, this.
Well, I think the document we saw last week said that the Deion Richter recommendations will be made to the board by February twenty-eighth.
By, yeah, they're not necessarily on.
Right. And then we could then discuss them at the next meeting, right?
Exactly. So, so it needs to be on March fifth's agenda. Thank you, Noel. Okay.
So we're thinking of adding that to the March fifth?
Yes. And we have agenda planning, yes, uh, next Thursday. All right. Dr. Stewart?
All right. I know that Dr. Thornton permitted in his examples, many mentioned a, a pre-K four. I don't know that it was just an oversight, I'm sure it wasn't intentionally, but, uh, this talk, conversation here is about the visit for the last two days, uh, in Washington, D.C. Uh, and I wholly support a process by the school board. When someone intends, attends an important meeting, like last year at NSBA in San Diego, that they bring back, as I did, pertinent information, one related to five-year.
They give a mile in the process.
That's right. So preemptively, I established a process of bringing back and sharing important information in the five-year planning budget process, it may be useful. Today, you have in front of you only school board members, and Dr. King, you have a copy. I wanna tell you what went on because it was important, and I wanna do it in less than five minutes. First of all, the top packet, the top three sheets are the items that people from all over the country, school board members from all over the country, visiting their elected officials in Washington, D.C., like we emulated here in Norfolk with our elected officials within the state of Virginia. The top sheet tells you the key issues. Notice the star. The top sheet tells you the key issues, notice the star issue number four. Just notice it.
Don't say anything.
Yeah, just supporting that are single sheet background information sheets for that starred issue that was submitted. It was a big conversation topic. The second packet of information is what the message of Congress that they were presenting. This, if you read this, then you could have been at that meeting. This is what they presented. The second is legal advocacy perspective and overreach for the United States. If you read this, you were at the meeting. The next is related to teacher evaluation. Dr. Houston, you said of these assisters to our, our leaders in the system, that these people aren't going anywhere, guess what? Change happens in education really fast, we have a flavor of the monk club and it occurs every two or three years. The teacher evaluation issue about how much percentages are involved in teacher evaluation and required, it's gonna be tested in court, there's a whole lot of things. This is important and it's related to that particular item. And I went to one on the, what's behind the curtain. So each of these items, I'd be happy to have an individual conversation, don't wanna do it with everyone right now, but this is the information that I thought was most important. There were other concurrent sessions, but most of them were for new school, school board members and whatever. This is a lot of information about what happened up there. Anecdotally, I visited with and presented to Senator Kane and Senator Warner, Congressman Moran, who's retiring, and Congressman Scott. Congressmen's...
You got, you got to see them directly?
I was the presenter. It's all four of them. I was used particularly with the two former governors, because I know them very well, and I know Congressman Scott, he's wonderful. And I used to be assistant superintendent in Alexandria where Congressman Moran was mayor. So I had the opportunity to be the, make the presentations. All four, guess what they talked about? The starred item on the cover sheet. So alliance, you know, anything that we, if we ignore that, next week, we're silly. But really important in all of this was how discouraging they were about the condition of Washington, where they said, "We don't have malaise and gridlock here, nothing's happening." Our key issue was, and as you should see in these issues on the top sheet, reauthorization of ESEA. Dr. Thornton, they say it's going nowhere. It's not that people are dreadlocked, they're just not talking about it. Restoration, my leads, my lead presentation, Dr. Robinson, was restoration over sequestration, that was my presentation. There, it's been some restoration, it occurs over the next two years, but it could fall back to the bad situation that we're in. ESEA is in jeopardy, the new big initiative, starred item number four. And there was some conversation from school board members from Virginia, we had twenty-five of us. First, we all went to see each senator, then following that, we broke down in teams to visit specific representatives, just like we did. The constituents visited their own elected officials, people from Wolf District or from Visiting Wolf, people from Whitman's District. So all of them are very clear, things are goofy in Washington. It's difficult, it's not, it's not malaise, it's not deadlock, nothing's happening. Having said that, we have strong supporters in those four representatives, I can't speak to the others, but the two senators are big supporters. The, the two congressmen, one Moran, who's retiring, is a big supporter, and Bobby Scott mentioned something that goes to the whole idea of testing. And it goes to the whole idea of O.E.I. And as a matter of fact, I had at least fifteen school board members from across the state of Virginia come up and say, "Thank you for what you did over O.E.I." "Thank you, thank you, thank you." So it was noticed. Bobby Scott said, "The question is not that you test, testing can be good for kids, it's what you do with the results." Now, someone, I always pay attention to what he said, he knew it, it's how we use the results. Do we use it to say, "I believe you can reach these goals, I believe you can know this information," or do we use it to say, "You're stupid, and you're bad, and you ought to fail?" That came from Bobby Scott, that came from someone who's been paying attention. We've got big supporters up there, we've got some people at the Washington level who are big, big, big supporters. Tangential thing, just, just today in the newspaper, along with some wonderful quotes from our Dr. King regarding, on the editorial page, is this article, I handed you a copy of this article. "We have some wonderful supporters in Washington, we have some wonderful supporters in Richmond, and we have some folks advocate to me is educate in order, educate in order to legislate. We have some folks in Richmond and some folks in Washington that do education, but they're not our two senators, they're not Congressman Moran, and they're not Bobby Scott." I'm done, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we were closed, our usual way, Rodney, any thoughts for the good of the order?
No, just, I guess in light of Dr. Stewart's report, we heard from Dr. Thornton last week about the Virginia preschool initiative and some changes there and the impact this potentially will have on our district. With all of this wonderful mobilization that's coming together, I think we should ask them to tackle that first. And if, and so if they can help, I mean, if there's some low-hanging fruit and some immediate impact, then being able to get that change would have a significant impact on our gap in our budget situation. So in terms of advocacy and outreach and taking advantage of the tea leaves, maybe that's something we should consider asking the influencers to tackle on our behalf.
Thank you. Courtney?
Thank you for today, I think the new agenda format and the way we're approaching it seems to be working. I know we've added a few meetings, but it is budget season, so I appreciate Dr. King you bringing this to our attention as a way that we can deliver and receive information, and thank you for having a good day today.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that the kinds of things that we did at our school board training and the change that we made in that, in that training, you know, is really helping us here. And so I appreciate the, you know, what we have done in the way of changes. So I just wanna, it's always great to see great principals in operation. And just over there at Lindenwood, volunteering over there, and I just wanna say that I'm real thankful that Dr. King has had the wisdom to put Dr. Clark Freeman over there. I think she's doing a great job there. And so we really appreciate the hard work that those teachers and principals are doing.
Thank you. Noel?
I thought this was a very good meeting, and I think that the process and the agenda format is starting to become much more cohesive. We're getting used to the format, the administration's getting used to the format, I think our questions are becoming a little bit more succinct, and I really appreciate the clarity around that. We actually made it through all of the presentations, from communications to the Norfolk Foundation to teaching and learning, which I think was a good achievement for us and progress in us becoming a governance leadership team. So I know that Deborah and Gina are watching, and, and if we do need those six sessions in order to maintain that level of cohesiveness and distinction and to continue to improve upon it, I'm willing to do that, if it's, if that's what the entire board feels, because I do feel that we are becoming more of a cohesive unit, so that we can then set good examples for the rest of the district. I am excited about our budget planning for next week and excited about the budget that we're going to bring to city council, and I just don't want us to forget about some of the unique ways that we can, again, attract and retain new families. I'll mention it again, if we can consider, down the road, maybe at one of the March budget meetings, or maybe even April, looking into some pre-K slots that are tuition-based, so that we can increase our pool of students who, we may not be able to cover them as four-year-olds, but the next year they'll be kindergarten, and they can contribute to the average daily requirements, membership, since we seem to be on a somewhat of a trend of losing students, which, which we heard in the meeting yesterday, is, is not specific to Norfolk Public Schools, but in a lot of other urban school districts. So if we can do that, I think that we would not only be maintaining goals that we want to do, but also looking to think out of the box and making sure, as Rodney had mentioned, that this does align with our strategic plan. And if we need to go back and tweak the strategic plan so that we can allot for these changes and the alignment of the stars with pre-K, then, then so be it, it will be a living document. But it should be our compass and what guides our work. So I would just like to, again, applaud Dr. King and his staff and everybody for the excellent reports and the presentations. So, good meeting.
Thank you, Noel. Sam?
Long that, that line, just remember that, as long as we stay the course on what a work session is, what it means, what you, what you just alluded to will continue to be more and more streamlined. And we will always get, travel our path through each department linked to the strategic plan. It's just a matter of staying the course so that we get all those things that are, that have been looming out there that we needed to, to address, addressed. And with that said, I'd like to thank the members of the team for their flexibility and their adjustment throughout the process. We have cabinet meetings scheduled each Tuesday, and those are very, very engaged discussions, tough discussions, and they're all related to what you hear, here. And so, and that's, that's the driver for decision-making for our school system linked to the strategic plan. So I wanna take the opportunity to, while they're still here, to say thank you to, to members of the team for, for the work that they do each day. That's it.
Thank you, Sam.
Great. Great meeting. You've heard me reference the, the book Switch, it's How to Make Change When Change is Hard, and one of the concepts that's brought out right at the beginning is to find the bright spots. Find the bright spots and see how you can replicate them in other areas. And that's why I'm encouraged to see what's going on in the priority and focus schools, because of the steps that have been put in place and we're starting to see the, the fruits of those labors with Ruffner. And I saw, when I first became a board member, I saw the changes that were made at Northside School, that Mr. Fraley was principal of that school, and how that school went from one of the lower-performing middle schools to one of, to the top-performing middle school. And was, when he was asked to take over Ruffner, I knew he had a challenge, but he was up to it. And I'm, I'm excited that he's getting the direction from you all, and it's all falling into place, so keep up the good work.
Thank you. I, I agree, that we're moving in the right direction, and I was very pleased at how quickly we moved through the presentations today, and questions answered, and we were able to clearly understand where we are in, in each of those areas. The only other thing I would add, in addition to, thanks to Sam and the staff for working along with us, and especially through a rough patch, when we were trying to make sure we were getting exactly what we felt the board needed in the, in the reports and the way we wanted them formatted, and so thank you all for that. The only other thing I would add is, I, I know I work best in terms of preparation of questions, and so for next week, I'm gonna get with Sam and, and maybe we can design two or three questions that need to be answered for our conversation next Wednesday, and maybe that'll help us to focus in, and we, we won't kind of rehash things that we've talked about already for months, and we'll just kind of pick up from where we are relative to these budget, budget issues, answer the two or three relevant questions, as we call them in preaching, and, and get there more, more quickly. And so I'll try to have, have those provided for us prior to Wednesday. Okay, all right, thank you, we stand adjourned.